I'd like to call the order to the Sparks City Council Meeting of May 13th, 2013 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
Acting City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
And City Clerk Gardner, we have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, Speaker Brad Dyrness from the Sparks Church of the Nazarene.
Before I pray, let me read this passage of scripture in light of some of the things that are going on in our community lately. "You will not fear the terror of night nor the arrow that flies by day. When he calls to me, I will answer him; when he is in trouble, I will rescue him and honor him." Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for your protection. And in light of some of the shootings and some of the things that our police have had to deal with in the last few weeks, Lord, we pray for your protection and your guidance and your wisdom. Give them understanding and courage. Pray for our firefighters as well, Father, and we pray that you will protect them as they protect us. We ask you for your wisdom and your insight for our leadership, Father. We recognize that every organization like this has always requested more funds from than they have available. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and insight as they are good stewards of their resources and the people that they manage, and, Father, we pray that you'll encourage them. And, Lord, we honor Sean Carey today, and we thank you for his accomplishments. And, Lord, may you encourage and bless him as well. And your word tells us to pray for our leaders, so, Lord, we pray your blessings on those who lead us today. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Dyrness, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, I have comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone wish to speak under comments from the public? Okay, have a seat. You've got three minutes, then you can fill it out after you're done. Go ahead, it's time. Go ahead, come on. That's all right, you're good at weighing it.
I just wanted to mention, I went to visit the last couple of days, our old friend John Armstrong. At the cemetery. But he's doing well. He's a little disappointed at a few things, but he's happy. And I talked to somebody that knew him, and he's glad to be where he's at. So I think we should do a little monument for him over at that park where the firemen are and the policemen. Why don't we put something in here for him? Can you do that? You know the...
I think we already have something at the marina.
I haven't seen it, but you have to tell me where it's at. I know where the memorial is for the girl, Quet, and a lot of others, but I don't know. It probably is over there. But anyway, my name is Ron McGee, and I do a few things different than most people. I'm working on some crosswalks at the marina on the Circle about. They haven't gotten painted yet, but this guy will, because I worked with him before on Ann Harbor. I apologize, my voice, because I'm dealing with some bad medication by the VA hospital two months ago, and I'm recovering my memories a little slow, and my speech is off, but I'm getting there. But I'm proud to get my new license plate. Disabled veteran, 100 percent, that I never applied for. And I have actually been accepted by Lieutenant Hawkins, who's a reserve police officer for Sparks PD, and I am fully running for mayor, 100 percent. And I'm pro-union, retired AT&amp;T, ex-military police officer sergeant, Vietnam. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Mr. Kerrigan? What did...I thought you were gonna...okay.
I was trying to vote, but...
Okay, it's...we can do that. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. I thought you were going for the talk button. Passage unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the council meeting of April 22nd, 2013, and March 18th, 2013 workshop. Any further...any omissions or corrections, deletions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the minutes of April 22nd and the workshop of March 18th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, moving on to proclamations. Proclamation, Sparks High School Hall of Famer Sean Carey Day. Come on up, Mr. Carey. Welcome to the other side of the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have three minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Your day's gonna last just three minutes, so...
I've never done anything in three minutes.
All right, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas Sean D. Carey is a lifelong resident of the City of Sparks, graduating from Sparks High School in 1975, and whereas during his time at Sparks High, he won second in state in wrestling his junior year and fourth in state in wrestling his senior year. Additionally, Mr. Carey was selected by his peers as the most inspirational player on the football team. And whereas Mr. Carey has served the City of Sparks as city manager since 2000, and is a fierce advocate for the city he serves and is dedicated to ensuring Sparks remains a full-service city that is most responsive to its citizens as government closest to the people. And whereas during his tenure to date, Mr. Carey initiated discussions and leads several projects that directly benefited Sparks High School, including improvements of the parking lot, track, and gym floor where he once wrestled his way to a state bid. And whereas in May 2013, Mr. Carey was inducted to the prestigious Sparks High School Hall of Fame and joins many recognizable and distinguished northern Nevadans who have made substantial contributions to our state and community. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 13th, 2000, as Sparks High School Hall of Famer Sean Carey Day.
Give your name for the record. Yeah. Sean Carey, class of 1975. My pleasure to be here today. I'm joined by my wife Jane Carey. She's been on this journey with me for a long time, and we've been very blessed to be back in Sparks since September 2nd, 1992, when I was hired behind this very podium to be your Public Works Director. And I've raised my two boys in Sparks. One of them, Scott Carey, is here today, and I'm joined by my oldest son Patrick's wife, Lacy Wolf Carey, who's here today. So they're the best family a man could ever ask for. I'm so proud of all they do, and especially looking forward to what they will do in their futures. The employees in Sparks are just unique people, and when I started some 20-plus years ago, when you walk through the door, you learn just how special they are. People like Mike Baselli and Andy Flock and Linda Patterson, to name just a few, that have touched my lives in ways I'll never forget. But I want you all to know, it's the leadership that you bring to our community that also makes a great difference. And serving you for the past 12 years as city manager has been one of the greatest joys of my life. And the challenges we have faced and the challenges we will face again are just part of what makes being in Sparks so special. Today, I watched the dream of Stan Shearer come to life with the dedication of the Whittaker Park and one of our residents, Charles Hancock, who started that effort in the 80s on a committee. And after the committee met a couple of times, it was just John Mayer and Mr. Hancock for many years, working to ensure that the federal government cleaned up some very contaminated property from a dynamite factory, basically. And that came to fruition today because of Tracy's leadership, Rick Darby's leadership, this council agreeing to the long-term process it takes to get through the core. It was really touching to be there today and just see the vistas and the many trails. And Mr. Lawson has already taken his dogs out on the trail, and I got elbowed in the car. When are we taking our dogs? So it's just...it's just great. But thank you all for this day. I have great memories of Sparks High School, and I just wanted to close by doing the end of the Sparks Fight Song and just go, "Woo, woo!"
Thanks, Sean. I think there's some refreshments outside for you folks. If you want to, we're gonna continue with the meeting, but go ahead and enjoy yourselves out there. Okay, let's move on to 4.2, which is proclamation EMS Week, REMZA proclamation. Ms. Ratty, would you read, please?
I would be honored.
Come on up, Jim.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas REMZAs and CareFlight's commitment to patient care throughout northern Nevada has been an integral factor in our community's safety, security, and success, and whereas REMZA has been a traditional...sorry. Whereas REMZA has been a national benchmark of community, medical education, child safety, and giving back to the communities they serve, and whereas the region is proud to have an organization such as REMZA and CareFlight operating within the state to ensure the highest quality of patient care and community support, and whereas the successes REMZA has accomplished are an indication of REMZA and CareFlight's employees and staff's dedication to the many communities served, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Congratulations.
I am honored to receive this on behalf of our staff for both REMZA and CareFlight. They're the ones here servicing the City of Sparks, and I am honored to receive this on their behalf. We will have our barbecue next week, and we'll make sure that this is displayed so that they can understand the appreciation that you've honored them with today. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to 4.3, proclamation for National Public Works Week. Mr. Krutz. Now, if you accept this National Public Works, do you have to pay a buck for this, or...
That is a dollar. I will happily contribute to the fund.
Okay, good. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of our public works programs and components such as engineering, design, construction, and traffic, maintenance, traffic safety, collections facilities, streets and fleet, and wastewater collection, treatment, and reuse. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of our public work services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, maintenance, and operation, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our public work staff. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's understanding of the importance of the work they do. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week and call upon all residents and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for acknowledging the work that is done by our public works professionals. Inside the Community Services Department here at the City of Sparks, what the mayor just described is about three-quarters of the services that we provide, and it's largely work that's done behind the scenes or under the pavement, and the public doesn't know we're there or those facilities are there until something goes wrong. And, you know, largely in our department, we take that as a sign of a job well done. But we do appreciate the opportunity to point out the critical services that those folks provide on our behalf, and so I am very pleased and honored on their behalf to accept this from you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, next is a presentation of certificate of appreciation from the U.S. Navy to the city staff. Who's doing this? Come on down, sir.
I'm the mayor.
How are you? Just give your name for the record, please.
Peter Altschul, United States Navy.
Okay, go ahead.
We have been working with Al Sorenson Community Center. My job is a Navy recruiter for Sparks area, and another job title I have is a scout for our Navy SEALs, SWIC, EOD, Navy diver, and air rescue swimmer. We work hand-in-hand with Al Sorenson, with using their pull, they're a gem for our push-ups, sit-ups, the gem for our pull-ups, and the track for our mile-and-a-half run. Basically, what that entails is that they can demonstrate that they have what it takes to do the physical aspects, and that's where Al Sorenson comes into play. They've always helped us, even with our tight schedule. They've always accommodated us, and we've always had a professional working relationship with them. Today, I have two letters, one from my commanding officer and one from our command that I would like to read. Our command is up in NRD Portland, so this is from them. It takes a special kind of person to enter the ranks of Naval Special Warfare SEAL and SWIC, Naval Special Operations, EOD, and Navy diver, and air rescue swimmer. Before candidates arrive at their training pipeline to prove that they have what it takes, countless hours of preparation are required to make them physically hard and mentally tough enough to make the cut. It's the job of NRD Portland's NSO/NSW mentor program to help them discover the warrior within and learn that true strength is a result of like-minded individuals coming together as a team in a cause greater than themselves. We're honored to recognize the City of Sparks, Parks and Recreation, as a valued part of our team in the Reno Sparks area. I wish to thank you personally for your service to our community and the significant contribution to the United States Navy and your country. The next one I will be reading is specifically from my commanding officer. Dear City of Sparks, Parks and Recreation staff, I was delighted to learn of your assistance in our efforts to prepare outstanding young men and women from northern Nevada for service in the most demanding of career fields, Naval Special Warfare, Naval Special Operations. Manning the fleet with the top-notch individuals is fundamental to preserving our freedom and advancing the safety, liberty, and well-being of people worldwide. Our sailors are ambassadors of goodwill and defenders of our citizens, their interests, and their allies in times of need. Your support demonstrates that you share our values, honor, courage, and commitment. Your Navy recruiters in northern Nevada area join me in thanking you for your outstanding commitment to your community and your significant contribution to the United States Navy. And we would also like to present them a plaque that they can hang at Al Sorenson. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Do you have any room for a couple of Navy retreads? We've got a couple up here.
I think I could...
I've got one on each side of me, so if you need some old guys to help out, just let me know. Thanks for being here, and thanks for the recognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can float now.
Okay, let's move to 4.5, Reno Housing Authority Scattered Site Status Report at the end of the NSP-2 three-year grant period. Welcome, how are you today?
Good, thank you, sir. In fact, let me start by saying that I really do want to thank the city staff who worked with us, Armando and George, and your support with getting us into the home program in the first place, the Good Neighbor Program. Clearly, we've had a lot of support in what we've done. But I do think it's significant what we've accomplished, and we haven't sought news coverage or anything of that sort, but I did, at the end of the three-year grant period for the NSP-2 grant, feel that we needed to do a summary of accomplishments. So what I've given each of you is actually a book of all the properties we bought, rehabbed, rented, leased, owned, or sold. And I think it's awfully impressive if you go through that. But let me...
Sir, one thing, could you state your name for the...
I'm sorry. David Morton. I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority of the City of Reno.
Thanks.
And I'm also your housing authority as well as Washoe County. We have a cooperation agreement, so we are your housing authority. What, again, the three-year grant period is only the focus of the effort, but we've been purchasing properties for almost four years in a variety of ways. We used Good Neighbor Program, we've used RHA money of our own, we...Senator Reed had gotten a grant for Oliver Montello. We bought 44 houses in that area under those programs. Then with Neighborhood Stabilization Program 1, we bought another 35 houses. And then under the NSP-2 grant, the one that we competitively won across the country, this was not an allocation, it was a competitive grant that we sought, we've done 156 homes. 50 of those have been in Sparks, and I would urge you to drive by and look at these. I think you'll be dang impressed with what we've done. I'm sorry. Did I not...
I just wanted it to be big for you.
Oh, okay, great. You'll see the stars, and at the bottom, each of those indicate the program under which we acquired it, whether it was sold, leased, again, depending on the specifics of the grant, we had to deal with those in a particular way. Just to give you some examples, these are houses that we have rehabbed, and again, I just...I think they look as good as anything in those neighborhoods, and we've gotten nothing but positive comments. I've had neighbors in Sparks actually come over and tell me they're really glad we bought that house, because they know what we're gonna do with it. And I never thought I'd live that long, to have housing authorities patted on the back for buying properties in their neighborhood. But we've done, I think, a very impressive job, and I would just urge you to go by and look at these. More of the same. We've really focused on zero-scaping, and I'll come back to that in just a second. But the real focus, I didn't hire staff and set up a big apparatus to run this. We didn't take that tack. We use local contractors. We use local real estate agents. We use local appraisers. Virtually all of the money we spent was to local folks to help keep them in business during the tough times. We spent over $20 million buying properties using all of the funding sources, and we've spent almost $6 million in rehabbing and landscaping of those properties, and that was as of February the 11th, the time period. The focus of our efforts, again, depending on the grant, I had to focus on the specifics of that. Under NSP, we had to spend at least 25 percent of that money for low-income people. So what that meant for us was rentals. We wanted to make sure we could control that, we could keep those in good shape. But the rest of it was for homeownership for middle-income people, and that's an important focus, I think, here. In other words, what we've done with way more of the money is to help first-time homebuyers who are from 50 to 120 percent of the median income buy their first home. And we've given them some just really killer deals. Houses that totally renovated, highly energy-efficient, zero-scape lawns, and then we even make it, give them incentives to purchase it with a long-time commitment. We've been among the top performers nationally, among the 56 awardees who got NSP-2 money. We've obligated, again, as of that point, 21 million is what we received, we've obligated almost 23 million, but that's because we get program income. When I sell a house, we lose money every time we sell, and that was the intent. But we do get program income, so we still have money, even though we've gone beyond the 21 million. We've gotten national recognition for the program. Again, HUD actually...and I meant to bring you a copy of that CD, I apologize. HUD actually did a DVD on our agencies, scattered site properties. The training exercise is what they set it up as, where they actually have sent us around the country. You can find it on their website, telling you how to deal with scattered site housing successfully. And NARO, the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, just gave us their award of excellence for our zero-scaping. And you've got a copy of what was in their National Housing Journal that came out just about two weeks ago. I had made a copy of that article for you, so if you look in there, you'll see there's about a fourth of that is about us and our landscaping. What are we gonna do from here? Well, we've met the clear grant obligations, except we still have program income. I have to use that money to purchase additional foreclosures, but because we're in the process of getting an opportunity to do some really exciting things at the Housing Authority, we asked for authority to spread that out. Instead of just buying in those four target areas, could we buy some properties in nicer neighborhoods and purchase those and use those as a mobility program for the elite people in our public housing program? In other words, some of those people that have been with us two years, great records, great housekeepers, great tenants in all regards, we want to give some of them the opportunity to move into other neighborhoods with assistance. But again, we'll still be controlling those, keeping those in the same kind of manner. So we're excited. Moving to work, I could take quite a bit of time and talk to you about, but you probably don't want to get into that today. But it's a HUD designation that gives us flexibility among what most housing authorities do. We actually can get waivers of a lot of procedures, we can do...have flexibility with some of the funding, so it will give us an opportunity, I think, to do some even more impressive things in the next few years. So that basically is my report. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Morton. Just a comment for me, David. Thank you so much for what you guys do. I've had the pleasure to go to a couple openings of some of the houses that you guys have redone, and it's amazing. They're just really nice, well-done, beautiful properties, so we appreciate that.
I appreciate that very much. I really do.
Anyone else? Thanks, David. Next, 4.6, presentation and update on status of the Sparks Senior Citizens Center. Mr. Tarbutton, welcome, Grady.
Good afternoon. For the record, Grady Tarbutton, Director of Washoe County Senior Services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Driscoll. I have a document to leave with you, which is published by the University of Nevada-Reno. It's called Elder's Count 2013. And I'll leave this with Mr. Driscoll. This really defines for us the challenge that we're going to see over the next 40, 50 years, as seniors eventually become 22 percent of our entire community, including Sparks. So the partnership that the City of Sparks and Washoe County have through the Sparks Senior Center in serving seniors is critical, and I want to thank this council for their support, budgetary support, as well as their advocacy on the behalf of seniors in the community, as we discussed the master plan for senior services and how we move forward. Right now, Washoe County serves 8 percent of all people over the age of 60. Right now, Washto County serves 8% of all people over the age of 60. And our goal needs to be to serve at least 20% in terms of direct services. And the reason for that is our actions help people stay independent and in their own homes. Now, as you look through data such as this, you'll see that there's a high percentage of people, and I'll go through some of the data here in just a minute, a high percentage of people who are low-income, who've had dementia, or who live alone. And that's true in Sparks as well as the entire Washto County. The Sparks Center gives people an access point, a place to come to get basic services. And I'm pleased to announce that over the past year, we reported to you about a year ago, that about, of all the services that Washto County provides, about 19% of Sparks' residents were on our caseload. Well, this year, year-to-date, it's 20%. So we're seeing a slow, steady increase in number of Sparks' residents that are getting direct services from us. The reason we do what we do is that seniors prefer living at home, and they have a higher quality of life. Most recent studies say that about 90% of people would rather live at home rather than an institution. Also, supporting people in our homes is cost-effective. As you know, the taxpayer is responsible for paying Medicaid for long-term care services. Washto County services for high-risk clients cost about $4,000 a year. The cost of a person in a nursing home costs a state $59,000 a year. So if we're able to divert more people, then we are able to keep costs down for the consumer. And with our population growth, it's going to be a critical piece of what we do. And about 2000, we had 40,000 people over the age of 60. In 2010, it was 76,000. By 2020, it'll be 100,000, and by 2030, it'll be 130,000 people over the age of 60. It's one of the challenges we face as governments to make sure that the most vulnerable folks are served. We know that this is going to be a permanent change. Even though Northern Nevada seniors have actually seen an increase in income, and they report being somewhat healthier than other people around the country, we know that that is not entirely the case. 27.7% of our residents live alone. 20% are at or near poverty. That means the lowest 20% of seniors have an average income per household of $9,900. More than 60% of all seniors live primarily on their Social Security, which nationally averages $14,400 per year. So even though we see, we may say that there's not a lot of people that are low-income, in fact, there are, and it's because they're on fixed incomes that they're increasingly vulnerable. 7.8% of our people are over the age of 85, and that will increase by another 38% by 2020. 41% of Washto County residents report being frail. In other words, they need a walker, or wheelchair, or some other form of assistance in order to leave home. It's one of the highest rates in the United States. And Nevada is among the highest in people that have Alzheimer's disease or dementia. So we see these significant challenges coming for us. And yet, as I said before, Washto County Senior Services serves a relatively small number of those people, only 8%. We have lower-cost options, which Sparks' residents take advantage of. I said earlier that we have about 20% of our entire caseload, which is about 5,000 people per year who are Sparks' residents. We have, at least year-to-date, this, we aren't done with the year, of course, until the end of June, over 381 Sparks' residents took advantage of our Congress Meal Programs. 120 took advantage of our home-delivered meal programs. The highest percentage is those that receive case management and in-home care, at 29%. In other words, we're doing a very good job of identifying the residents of Sparks who are the most vulnerable, and we're getting a case manager out to them, we're getting in-home services out to them, we're getting home-delivered meals out to them. Regardless, that is not adequate as we move forward. Washto County is going to begin work on a master plan, or has begun work on a master plan for seniors, and we're, of course, going to ask Sparks City Council to participate in that. Mr. Lawson is your representative on the Senior Services Advisory Board, and we will ask him to be a member of our Leadership Forum, which is going to help guide the direction of the master plan. By February, we will have a report for the County Commission, saying what we need to do next, and what are the most important things for us to do to try to increase that percentage of people that need service from us. I'll take any questions that you have. Again, I want to thank you for your support. It's excellent. You have a confirmed partner from Washto County into making this work and trying to find ways to meet those vulnerable folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Grady. Questions? Okay. Grady, thanks again, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? I'm going to pull 5.3. Won't be heard today. There's an issue with what happened here, and we need to re-agendize this at a different time. Anyone else want to pull an item? Mr. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull, excuse me, 5.2 and 5.13.
Anyone else? Not looking for a motion on the rest? Mr. Schmidt.
I'll try that motion. Approved consent items 5.1, 5.4 through 5.12.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Was it 12 or 13 that was pulled?
13.
13's pulled.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to approve 5.1 and then 5.4 through 5.12. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Mr. Kerrigan, 5.2.
Yeah, I just wanted somebody to just go over this real quick on what's, on the CIP, what's going on? Because it looks like we're getting some extra money for CIP, is that right?
Not extra money. Stacy Hammerling, Budget Administrator. We brought this, the same item to you guys in January. It was an augmentation. It's just our, the funds, projects that were not completed in fiscal year 12, we wouldn't have had Budget Authority in this year to do them. We were just bringing those unspent Budget Authority forward. We did that in January.
To me, that's extra money, but go ahead.
Okay. Okay. And then, and we approved in January to continue to do those projects. We needed to bring the Budget Authority forward, and that was already approved. This is coming to you today because I made a mistake on the paperwork that went to the State Department of Taxation to file this budget augmentation. I pulled a wrong number off of our annual financial statements. Nothing changed with the amounts we were going to augment for each of those projects, nor did anything change with the status of those projects, but I did need to correct the paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 5.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Mr. Kerrigan, 5.13.
Yeah, I just thought I'd give the, what do we call it again? The Tourism Committee? Tourism and Marketing Committee?
Turnmark.
A chance, just, turnmark, yeah. Thank you. Just to go over the room tax allocations, because I think it's really important. I mean, we're donating a lot of money to special events. I just thought it'd be time for them to go ahead and talk about it.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. I'll be glad to go ahead and give a brief recap of this year. We, our record-breaking year this year, we're going to be supporting special events to a higher tune than we ever had before. That's a good thing and a bad thing, and I'll go into a couple of those things. I won't go over everybody that we've funded, how much. I do want to highlight some of the new events that are going to be happening this year. The first would be the Sparks Museum and Culture Center, Western Heritage Festival, and I believe that was last weekend, so, this weekend?
Yesterday and the day before.
Right, yeah, okay. So, and I haven't heard back how that went for that event, but we did, we did fund that event. We've also given Sparks Park and Rec Department $10,000 to handle things that come up throughout the year for special events that may need to have something taken care of that wasn't included in the contract or something, a little bit of flexibility for the staff. Another new event for the Reno News and Review is Arts in Bloom. This event actually was going on in Reno for several years, and it's now being moved over to Sparks. Not a new event, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living, the Pumpkin Palooza, I believe I said that right, was an event that started last year. The group lost money on the event, but it proved to be very popular with Sparks residents, and so we're supporting that to move that event along. And of all the events we have, I believe this event could be one, it could actually turn into a month-long type event instead of just a one-day event. And the other one would be, even though it's our second year for the event, it still is a great new event, receiving exposure worldwide for the City of Sparks, the U.S. Open or Water Cross Event to the tune of $20,000. Since we have closed this on out, we've had a request for another event that we're going to be scheduled meeting for, and that's the return of the Wakeboard Competition to the city. They've asked to come back, so we'll be working with staff to see how we can implement that. The allocations this year exceed a quarter of a million dollars. Our allocation that we receive on room tax is estimated to be at $138,000 for next year. We have a policy that we always work with the money we have, and that the money coming up July 1st, that $138,000 will be next year. The reason why we're able to fund these events is through the Redevelopment Agency and through this council's appropriation on appropriating $100,000 of special events through that. My concern is that next year, that Redevelopment Agency goes upside down and not going to be self-supporting, and so it's going to be an issue whether that $100,000 continues going through. We do have enough money in the bank to go one more good year without the additional allocation, but in two years, so we did do some deficit spending this year. I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions from council.
Just one comment. I think the Western Heritage Festival went very well. From what I heard, it got very good TV coverage. I saw it on two channels. So I understand there was 1,200 to 1,500 people down there that attended, so I think that's good for the first time out, so.
We felt it was a good allocation for an event that is Sparks' first time to support that event.
Ms. Ratty.
And I just have one clarification. There's a lot of events there, and I just want to make sure that this is correct, because I think it's an important point. And I hear about it a lot at the Parks and Recreation Commission side of things. The Arts in Bloom event was a City of Sparks event, and the big change there is that it's no longer being produced by the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department, it's now being produced by an outside provider. And that's been something the Parks and Rec staff have been moving, pushing towards over the last couple of years. You saw it with the Farmer's Market, moving to Shirley's and the Nugget, and now Arts in Bloom moving to the News and Review. And I only clarify it because I think that trend of us getting out of the event production arena is good, and I love to see Turnmark supporting those new producers as they're coming in and taking that over from us. So thank you for that.
I do think you are correct, but I think we're both correct. They're moving their event from Reno to Sparks, right? He's not moving his event that he had?
No, Julia, it's right.
Okay. My mistake.
But, I mean, I think what you're, what you're talking about, Ron, is that the News and Review has a great track record of producing an event in Reno in Wingfield Springs, and that's why we're so excited about them taking over this event in Sparks.
And I just said, Biden notes have that in it, that he was moving that event, so when he took it over, he was not going to do his event in Reno. That's why I understood it, what he said, but, you know, it's immaterial to the award.
Yeah. It's all good news.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Tracy. Parks and Recreation Director. The agreement when Reno News and Review took on the production of Arts in Bloom was that they can keep the name and keep the event in Sparks. That's, that's one of the standing agreements when we hand over the production of events, so it'll still be at the Plaza.
Correct, correct, yes. So it'll all be held here in Sparks. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, just a, just a comment. I, thank you very much for that, Mr. Schmidt. I think everybody needs to know that. The other factor I'd like people to know is that the RCVA's budget for special events is less than the City of Sparks', and they, and they support Reno and Washto County and Sparks', so I just thought I'd bring that up. And with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Question, Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to point out that part of these, part of the new events that we're having are taking place in October. I think we have maybe four now, so that's extending our season and opening up some of their slots for somebody else, too. So this is all good news.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 6.1, Consideration of Possible Approval of a Changing of Sewer Rate Structure Placed on a 321 Ninth Street. Is Mr. Boomerad here? Not? Okay, I got an email from the gentleman, and was, he was not prepared to be here today to talk about the appeal, so I'd like to continue this until the next meeting, if Jeff? Any problem with continuing this?
Not at all.
Okay. So looking for a motion, looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Yeah. Move to continue this till, do we need a specific date?
The May 28th meeting?
May 28th meeting.
Is that right?
We've got their calendar.
You can hear the matter now in the extension.
Well, I'd rather that the gentleman was here and had a chance to talk.
I need some clarification also, so.
It's the 27th.
We're going to continue this.
No, 28th.
It's the 28th, because it's Tuesday, yeah, okay.
It's Tuesday.
So we're going to continue to the 28th. Do I have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to continue 6.1 until May 28th meeting. Any further discussion?
If you want to make that a be certain, because you can show up on the 28th, that that'll be it.
That can be part of the motion. Is that okay with the motion-makers?
Yeah, let's amend that.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, for that. That's a good idea. We don't want this to go on forever.
You're not just another pretty face.
Exactly. Potted plant.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Ms. Ratty.
Sorry, chatting down.
Passes unanimously.
Multitask, come on.
All right, 6.2, Consideration of Possible Acceptance of a Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Program High-Priority Grant and Interlocal Agreement Regarding Its Use with the City of Reno. Chief Allen, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Acting Chief Brian Allen for the record. I come before you today just requesting acceptance of a federal motor carrier grant, similar to the joining forces grant, but this one deals with, you know, the semis and those types of things. As you are aware, we have the two-only truck stops that service those types of vehicles in the City of Sparks. We partner with the City of Reno to make sure that these vehicles are safe, along with Nevada Highway Patrol. This money is in an local agreement that basically says Reno is going to run the financial side of the grant for us, and we work in partnership with them, so I'm just looking for your approval.
Questions for Chief Allen? Mr. Lawson?
And, Ron, is this going to be on the surface streets mostly or mostly highway?
We set up different, we do both. We do surface street enforcement, and then we'll also go out and assist Nevada Highway Patrol at the inspection sites as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, ready to make a motion?
Go for it.
Move to approve and accept the Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Program High-Priority Grant and Interlocal Agreement with the City of Reno.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.2, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. Passes unanimously with those present. Thanks, Chief. 6.3 is a first reading.
Bill number 2657, in ordinance amending Chapter 2.25 of the Sparks Municipal Code to align more closely with the Nevada revised statutes and to update the city council approval requirement from $25,000 to $50,000, providing other matters property-related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number 2657. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, May 28th, 2013. Six- 6.4 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2658, in ordinance amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.01 International Building Code, Chapter 1505 Administrative Code by adopting the 2012 edition of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Fuel-Gas Code, International Existing Building Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2011 Edition National Electrical Code, 2012 Northern Nevada Amendments and Other Matters Properly Related to There, thereto.
This is a first reading of Bill Number 2658. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, May 28th, 2013. Moving on to 6.5, consideration and possible approval of a medical claim against the city from Maria A. Huerta in the amount of $50,000. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, and your risk manager for this item for the record. In January of 2012, Ms. Maria Huerta was returning to her car in the evening, tripped and fell in a parking lot that is owned by the city, and she was accompanied by a family member, and that resulted in some very serious injuries to Ms. Huerta, for which she has incurred a large amount of medical, as well as she's still recovering physically from this injury. We use an insurance adjuster investigator as part of our risk committee, which is established under ordinance by the council through the city manager's office, to investigate and talk to Ms. Huerta and her family to determine the actual facts and to look at the medicals that were involved, as well as the recovery and all the modifications that have been made to the house, as well as members of her family helping her through her recuperation period, which continues to this day. In the claim that was filed back in November, which was discussed in December by the committee, and then we've fulfilled the investigation since then, we've determined, and the family has said that they would be willing to settle for $50,000, which is less than the medicals that have been incurred at this point, and that even though there's been other costs incurred and family members with their personal time, that they would be happy just to help offset their medical expenses and would release the city for all future claims, as well as current claims with this proposed settlement. So with that, I'm prepared to answer questions.
Questions, Mr. Carrigan?
Are we insured for this?
This is below the $100,000.
Oh, is that our deductible?
Deductible.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to settle the medical cost claims from Maria A. Huerta in the amount of $50,000 and instruct the city attorney's office to secure all appropriate legal releases bringing closure to this claim against the city.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 6.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Public hearings. Public hearing, consideration and possible approval of fiscal year 1314 Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Annual Action Plan. George, I knew you were wearing a tie for some reason today. You knew you were going to be on TV, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I would have wore a suit or...
Mr. Graham?
Good afternoon, city council, mayor, city manager, George Graham, housing specialist for the record. For consideration, the annual action plan for HUD, through CBG, our entitlement, which is an entitlement amount of, and also some reprogramming of some funds to address several items, housing included, as well as pedestrian improvements and other things within the community. And the action plan is to be submitted on the 15th to HUD, and I'm just bringing this for your consideration.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions for George? Ms. Ratty?
No questions, so I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the proposed project funding allocations and to submit the program year for fiscal year 201314 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Oh, Christ.
Oops.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I take that back. I rescind that motion.
I wasn't paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks, everybody that shouted "public hearing." Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, glad we did that. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Ms. Ratty?
Make that same motion.
Do we have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 7.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, George. Terrific report.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
First year. Mr. Assistant City Manager, we haven't closed door?
Not this week, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public. I have one speaking card for Mr. Bussie. You say, Bussie?
Busey.
Busey, okay, I'm sorry. You have three minutes, sir.
My name is Doug Busey, and I'm here to speak about the condition of the DeAndrea community. I'd like to address the condition of the DeAndrea community open space. When we retired and wanted to downsize, we decided on moving to the DeAndrea community for the open space and views. I have provided you with the handbook pages, which include the clubhouse, landscape, and maintenance building. The DeAndria handbook under landscape states, "DeAndria has two major focal points, a village center and a championship golf course. The golf course's central location provides a core of lush green interconnected by network of natural open space and trail systems, and one of the project's main attractions." An article that appeared in the RGJ on April 11th stated, "Former owner Will Gufteson, who is assisting owner in Symphony Inc., said recently the course is not going to reopen. There is not any reopening of Golf at DeAndria." Gufteson wrote in an email, "The property, starting with the current reconstruction of the existing clubhouse for non-golf use, will ultimately be repositioned for alternative uses. Since the golf course is out of business, the open space as described in the DeAndria handbook is not being maintained. Besides the failure to maintain the open space and landscape, I feel that work is going on at the clubhouse that completely changes the clubhouse to another type of non-golf use, which does not abide by the DeAndria handbook. I would hope that the City of Sparks, to protect its valuable assets, would put a stop work order on any activity at the facility until a plan could be provided by the current owner and appropriate permits issued for any activity. In the interim, I would think that the City of Sparks could compel the current owner to abide by the handbook, as they did pay homeowners dues, and maintain the open space as stated in the landscape section of the handbook. The homeowners have to abide by the handbook, so should the golf course owners. I have been associated with DeAndria since 2000 and believe it is only because these owners, being poor businesspeople, that the DeAndria Golf Course is closed. To let them continue to destroy this community is not responsible governance by the City of Sparks. The valuation of our property is also being affected, which in turn affects the City of Sparks' income. While we cannot be concerned about what has happened in the past, I am concerned about what happens in the future for the DeAndria community. I hope the City of Sparks is also concerned about the future of the community. Thanks for your understanding."
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Driscoll?
No, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's for comments.
Okay. You know, I think we, didn't we receive a letter, Neil, on this already, and are we addressing this? Or have we addressed?
We're looking into the questions.
Okay. So we are looking into this, Mr. Busey, to address the questions. Were you part of the ones that sent the letter to the city? Okay.
I just have a little more.
Okay, all right. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
What do you suggest we do?
Well...
We don't own the golf course.
Yeah, I know you don't, but I think that, you know, under the direction, the city approved the handbook and what that was used for, and what's happening is, the whole community out there, of course, it doesn't look very good or anything, and so for the owner, I don't know what can be done. That's why I'm bringing this to the attention, that to me, if he doesn't pay his taxes, if they don't do all their other things, they should keep up that landscape like it says in the handbook, as the homeowners have to. We have to abide by it.
You know, I kind of align it to other foreclosures, whether it's a house or whatever it is. It's foreclosed.
Right.
He doesn't own it anymore.
Well, I...
Although I hear he is involved in what's going on up there.
Yes, he is. He's actually invited people up to redesign the clubhouse for other uses, okay? Without, that to me requires a permit.
I just, I just don't know what this, well, that would be up to community services, but I just don't know what as a city we can do. And I've been up there, it's terrible.
Yeah, I know.
And I know you're heavily involved in it, and we all feel, we all are feeling the pain on this thing, so.
Yeah. I just feel that the City of Sparks with their, you know, this is their community. You, the City of Sparks approved it. If there's anything that can be done, that's why I'm bringing it up.
You know, and Doug, we're into this thing a ton of money.
Oh, I know you are, yeah, and we all are.
Just tuck our necks out.
Mr. Schmidt? I'm sorry, you got cut off.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Mike, you know, I'm just curious, do we have construction going on up there? Because I think that's the only piece of this that we have right now, because everything else is unknown. There's not much we can do until they decide to submit to do something with the property.
For the record, John Martini, Assistant Community Services Director. When these issues started coming to light, I asked the building official, Mark Miranda, to send an inspector up and to do research on the property. Currently, they have demolition permits that are active. Our understanding is that over the winter, they had some pipes break, and the interior of the clubhouse was ruined. Our building inspectors have been up. They have noted the activity to date is in compliance with a demolition permit. There is no construction going on to renovate the building that we're aware of.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Because I think that's important. When we say that there's, you know, we can't stop something if it's being done legally, and that's, you can't put a stop permit on it, a stop work order. You know, if they're following their permits that have been issued, and we have to, you know, you can't tie a demolition permit, as far as I know, to landscaping, you know, that's different stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're in compliance here, we don't have an issue with some rogue contractor.
Right. And my concern is, when he starts reconstructing the building for some other purpose, and this handbook states what the purpose of it is, and not that it'll ever become a golf course, okay? But, you know, that he needs to get a hold of the, make it the changes to the whole community, I assume, is, would have to vote on some other thing if he decides to make it a hospital facility. I mean, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, that would have to come in front of the council and planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Busey, I just want to say, I understand, and I understand it's frustrating, but I know in my word, we have several foreclosed houses that I get a letter on monthly, you know, and this, our hands are tied in this particular situation. Bear with us, know that we will do the right thing and do what we can. But it's a private property issue, and I certainly don't want to be in the business of taking over people's private property.
Well, I understand. Okay, we will address your concerns. I don't know if it's going to come out exactly like you like, but we will address your letter. Thank you, Mr. Busey.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.